Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for May 18, 2020. In accordance with the State Senate law of New Jersey's adequate notice of this meeting, the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 14, 2020 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver? Got you, Jim. You're on mute, but I heard a yes. Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Ms. Torrio?
Here.
And Dr. Swanson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Never rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. We have correspondence as listed. And then Dr. Antunes's superintendent's report, please.
Yes. So, not a lot tonight. I just wanted to reiterate to the public and the community that the administration and the board are committed to celebrating our class of 2020 to the extent possible within the framework and guidelines provided by the New Jersey Department of Education. Unfortunately, this guidance seems to change daily and sometimes hourly. So as we continue to get more information, we will continue to get it out there to the community to the best of our ability. The other thing that we have this evening is Dr. Feltry's presentation on the school performance report and the NJSLA science testing from last May. And I will present that.
Okay. Dr. Feltry?
Okay. Good evening. As Dr. Antunes said, this is my report on the school performance reports. Next slide, please. The school performance reports are open for public viewing by going to the school performance reports homepage, which is listed on the screen. Next slide, please. The New Jersey School Performance Reports contain information regarding student growth and academic proficiency, along with information about school climate, demographics, and post-graduation goals. Next slide, please. The 2018-2019 reports include new information on student participation in computer science and information technology courses, school-level per pupil expenditures, expanded data for student growth, chronic absenteeism, graduation rates, and career and technical education program participation, and three-year progress data for student growth, proficiency, and graduation rates over the last three years. Next slide, please. This table shows performance on each of New Jersey's ESSA accountability indicators for the last three years. These indicators are used to identify schools in need of comprehensive and targeted support. Since all of our indicators are well above the state expectations, and chronic absenteeism is well below the state average, none of our schools are in need of comprehensive or targeted support by the state. Next slide, please. These graphs illustrate trends in student growth over the last three years. Student growth is measured by student median growth percentile. The table shows us how student growth over the last three years compared to the statewide median. Our students consistently performed above the statewide median for both ELA and math, except for an implementation dip the year we revised the ELA curriculum to be in alignment with the standards, and the state was transitioning from PARC to the new NJSLA assessments. Next slide, please. These graphs show trends in proficiency rate for federal accountability over the last three years, and shows the percentage of students that met or exceeded expectations on the assessments. The expectation is that a minimum of 95% of the students participate. The table shows that our students consistently performed well above the statewide proficiency of the number of students who met or exceeded expectations. Next slide, please. These graphs show the four-year and five-year adjusted cohort graduation rates for the most recent three cohorts of students. The table shows, the table below, yeah, shows our student graduation rate is higher than the statewide graduation rate, and we consistently meet the goal of a 95% four-year graduation rate and a 96% five-year graduation rate. Next slide, please. This table shows the percentage of cohort 2019 graduates that met high school graduation requirements through each type of graduation pathway for both English language arts and math. The goal is for as many students as possible to meet the graduation requirements using the statewide assessment. The table shows that we are indeed above the state percentage for students successfully meeting the graduation requirement using the statewide assessment, and below the state percentage for the alternative assessment pathways, which is where we want to be. Next slide, please. This table shows the percentage of English learners who demonstrated the expected amount of growth for English language proficiency. We have a low number of English learners who outperform the state in making progress in our English language learner program. Next slide, please. Student absences provide important information about a school's culture and climate. Chronic absenteeism is defined as being absent for 10% or more of the year. This graph shows that we have a far lower percentage of students who exhibit chronic absenteeism than the state for all grade levels K to 12. Next slide, please. Do the students in classrooms across the state have the opportunity to be led by diverse teachers? Teacher diversity improves outcomes for all students. This table and graph both show that there is a greater student diversity in classrooms across the state than teacher diversity in schools. Next slide, please. Do the students in our classrooms have the opportunity to be led by diverse teachers? This table and graph both show that there is greater student diversity in our classrooms than teacher diversity in schools. We are in the process of formulating a strategy to increase the diversity of our teaching force. Next slide, please. The college and career readiness table shows the percentage of our students compared to the state who follow the various college and career readiness indicators. We have a greater percentage of students taking the SAT, ACT, and AP courses. In 2018, we had a lower percentage of students enrolled in dual enrollment, but over the last several years, we have increased the number of courses and students who participate in dual enrollment courses. The CILA biliteracy identifies graduating high school students who are able to demonstrate proficiency in English in addition to one or more languages. Next slide, please. The college and career readiness section includes participation in visual and performing arts coursework for students in grades six through 12. In grades six through eight, students cycle through related arts, and in the high school, these courses become electives. We do not have a dance or drama program at the middle school or the high school levels. Next slide, please. This table shows the performance of our economically disadvantaged students on statewide assessments compared to all students in the district and compared to the state. Our economically disadvantaged students outperform the economically disadvantaged students across the state in all indicators, and their chronic absenteeism rate is below the chronic absenteeism rate for the economically disadvantaged students across the state. While the five-year graduation rate is lower for our economically disadvantaged students, this number is likely not statistically different than the state rate. Next slide, please. This table shows performance of our students with disabilities on statewide assessments compared to all students in the district and compared to the state. Our economically disadvantaged students outperform the economically disadvantaged students across the state in all indicators, and their chronic absenteeism rate is below the chronic absenteeism rate for the economically disadvantaged students across the state. While the five-year graduation rate is lower for our economically disadvantaged students, this number is likely not statistically different than the state rate. Next slide, please. This table shows performance of our students with disabilities on statewide assessments compared to all students in the district and compared to the state. Our economically disadvantaged students outperform the economically disadvantaged students across the state in all indicators, and their chronic absenteeism rate is below the chronic absenteeism rate for the economically disadvantaged students across the state. While the five-year graduation rate is lower for our economically disadvantaged students, this number is likely not statistically different than the state rate. Next slide, please. This table shows performance of our students with disabilities on statewide assessments compared to all students in the district and compared to the state. Again, our students with disabilities excel for all indicators compared to students with disabilities across the state, and again, our students' chronic absenteeism rate is below the chronic absenteeism rate for the students with disabilities in the state. Next slide, please. This table shows performance of our English language learners on statewide assessments. Once again, our English language learners outperform English language learners across the state in all indicators, and once again, in keeping with the last two subgroups, our English language learners' chronic absenteeism rate is below the chronic absenteeism rate for English language learners across the state. Next slide, please. This table displays our students' performance by racial group compared to the state performance by racial group. Green numbers exceed the state numbers, red are below the state numbers, and the yellow highlight are virtually the same. By and large, our students in all racial groups outperform students in their respective racial group across the state. Chronic absenteeism for all racial groups in our district is well below the state chronic absenteeism percentages. Next slide, please. This table shows the number of incidents reported by type. The last row shows the rate of incidents for every 100 students enrolled, and is the data that provides an indicator of how we compare to the state. We have a very low rate of incidents in our district. Next slide, please. This table shows the number of students in full day and half-day pre-K and kindergarten for the past three school years. We have a half-day kindergarten program, well, we have half-day pre-K and kindergarten programs in Hillsborough. Our full-day programs are found in our Title I schools, and service our at-most-risk students for early intervention. Next slide, please. This table shows the ratios of students and staff members in the district compared to the state. Numbers in green indicate that we have a better ratio than the state, and numbers in red indicate that we have a worse ratio than the state. The data indicate that we have fewer administrators and nurses compared to the state. Next slide, please. This table shows the percentage of 2018 high school graduates enrolled in post-secondary institutions by the fall of 2019. In the racial groups with a large enough sample size, a greater percentage of Hillsborough students enroll in colleges and universities than students across the state. Next slide, please. We're going to transition into the reports of the science scores. Next slide, please. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment in Science is the new science assessment that is administered in grades five, eight, and eleven. The assessment was designed to measure student proficiency and mastering the New Jersey Student Learning Standards in Science for each grade band, three to five, six to eight, in high school. The test measures the student's ability to use the science and engineering practices to explain scientific phenomena appropriately. The science assessment is designed to provide data that helps district evaluate their science, curriculum, and instruction, and the science 2019 was the baseline year for the assessment. Next slide, please. This is the number of students at each grade level and the total number of students who were tested in the spring of 2019. Next slide, please. A student's performance is categorized as being at one of four performance levels, each of which is defined by a student's scale score. Students performing at level three and level four are considered proficient and above proficient in demonstrating understanding of the science content, disciplinary core ideas, and science and engineering practices. This table shows that the percentage of students performing at each level compared to the state. Our students are outperforming students across the state for meeting and exceeding proficiency, levels three and four. We would like to be below the state percentages for levels one and two, and above the state percentages for levels three and four. As this is the baseline year for data for this test, we need to identify the students on the bubble between level two and level three, and evaluate how our curriculum and instruction can support them in moving from level two to level three. Next slide, please. This table represents, is a graphical representation of information about what students know and can do with respect to the domains, which are earth and space science, life science, and physical science, and the practices being tested, investigating practices, sense-making practices, and critiquing practices. The data in this table provides information regarding how our students compare to students across the state, and provides actionable data regarding the strength of our science curriculum instruction in each of the domains and practice clusters. When compared to the state, we have fewer students performing below expectations and more students performing at, near, slash, met, and above expectations for all domains and practice clusters for all tested grade levels. With 60 to 70% of our students demonstrating proficiency in all domains and cluster practices, this indicates that our curriculum and instruction are aligned with the state standards, and that teachers are effectively implementing the next-generation science standards. Next slide, please. This table provides information regarding the percentage of students who perform proficient and advanced proficient by racial group for each of the tested grade levels, as well as district data for all grade levels. There is a performance gap by racial group in science that we are working to address through instructional rounds and culturally responsive instruction. This work will continue as we leverage common assessment and linked data to inform instruction. Next slide, please. This graph displays the percentage of students who perform proficient and advanced by gender for each of the tested grade levels, as well as district data for all grade levels. This graph demonstrates that we do not have a gender gap for performance in science. Next slide, please. Which essentially is, are there any questions?
Jane. Miss Stat.
I've heard the phrase instructional rounds before, and I don't know why I haven't asked before, but what does that mean?
Essentially, it means we had a group of teachers that went into each other's classrooms and looked for certain, we call them look-for. So, in the case of science and the performance gap among the racial groups, we looked for instructional strategies, climate, seating arrangements of students in terms of, could we identify any indicators or factors that might lead us to understand why we have this performance gap? We've done instructional rounds for a variety of different disciplines. We did one for English, we did one for math, we did one for special ed, we did one for overall climate. You know, last year in fifth grade, we did it for science, and this was before they were administered, you know, the science assessment. And out of that came questions about, well, how do we infuse culturally responsive instruction into our classroom? And so they started that in the spring.
So, you said this was done in the fifth-grade classrooms?
Mm-hmm. For science, specifically. We've done it at various grade levels for the last three years.
And so you take that information and try to come up with a follow-up plan?
Yes. We take that information, try to come up with actions that are then going to be implemented in the classroom, or school-wide, depending on what the focus is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any others? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Feltry, for the report. In the report, you mentioned that we were looking to provide students with access to more diverse educators. I was wondering, do you mean by that, like educators with a diversity of ideas? Or what do you mean by that?
I mean, but...
How are you defining diversity in this sense? Because I know we're, the only way that I would define it is a diversity of ideas. Most other diversity, I think, would be superficial.
Oh, no. In this case, we were talking about racial group. The graph that we were looking at, we have primarily white educators, but the demographic profile of our district shows that we have a larger racial profile than primarily white educators, so we would be looking to increase our diversity in that way.
Isn't skin color just superficial? I mean, why would that make any difference for students? Yeah, I stumped you. Okay, I'm done.
Well, often, the state is looking for diversity within districts. Now, this chart that Dr. Feltry put together was actually a template from the state. So, this is a template that the state provided to all districts across New Jersey. So, the state actually has a department that deals just with diversity among the educators within the state, and that's the reason why Dr. Feltry included that within the presentation.
And to follow up with that, too, we want students to see themselves in the teachers, and if students aren't seeing themselves in the teachers, they don't necessarily, research has indicated, learn as effectively, and they don't see themselves in learning the content.
Dr. Swanson, you got a couple of hands up. You got Mr. Pulsifer, Mrs. Harris, and Mrs. Stat.
Mrs. Harris, and then Miss Stat, again.
Thank you, Dr. Swanson. I think it's important that while it's not an exact science or math that applies, in general, people from different racial and ethnic backgrounds tend to have different life experiences, and so they bring those life experiences to the job, and that goes back to students seeing themselves in the educational staff. So, while it's not, it's not some precise thing you can measure, certainly, there is a diversity of upbringing that comes with different racial and ethnic groups that contributes to diversity in the classroom from having a diverse staff.
Dr. Harris?
Yes, I was going to say something along the same lines as Mr. Pulsifer said, and then I also had a question. Is this the first or second year of the administration for this testing?
The science testing?
Yes, the science.
It was the first year, it was the first baseline year. The year prior was a testing year to test out the questions. So, this was the first official administration.
Thank you.
Yep.
Miss Stats?
Regarding diversity, based on skin color, minorities, whatever you would like to refer to it, there is data that supports that students who, say, are black or Hispanic, if they have teachers that are likewise black or Hispanic, that they tend to do better. As has been said before, they see themselves in that instructor. Also, teachers from various backgrounds serve the whole population better by providing a diversity of cultures, experience, et cetera, which often is based on skin color or their culture. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Haas?
Hi. I just want to wrap up by thanking Kim for this report. I believe this is her first ever, and she did a really good job presenting all the data. I've had 15 years of Lisa Antunes presenting it. It was nice to have Kim presenting it, and Lisa being the slide clicker this time. So, thank you very much for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We had met with the Education Committee and had reviewed these questions before. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Feltry. Okay. Seeing no other questions, Dr. Antunes, did you have anything else that you wanted to share as part of the superintendent's report?
I do not. Dr. Swanson, I talked about the graduation prior. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. So, before we move on to committee reports, I just wanted to remind people that there is a button to click underneath the website to share any comments you had with the board during public comment session. I will read those out. I know that we have received many emails in the past week regarding graduation, and I want to take this opportunity to say that, as Dr. Antunes said, the board is committed to doing whatever we can to celebrate our seniors. The situation seems to be changing daily. As the governor contemplates gradual reopening of the state, the guidelines are changing. So, we're going to watch carefully and heed any guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education and the Miss regard. We're really hopeful that as things progress, the district will be as nimble as possible and able to pivot to take advantage of every opportunity to celebrate our seniors. And I'm personally, I'm happy that Ms. Bingert has assembled a committee of seniors and parents of seniors, faculty and administrators, to assist in planning not only the virtual graduation ceremony, but hopefully a slew of other events as well. I know they're collecting ideas for consideration, so please send those in using the form that was distributed by email. And know that through all of this, the board's priority is, and has always been, the safety of our students, staff, and the entire community. And having said that, we are positive that we will be able to make graduations special and memorable for our seniors. So, with that, I will turn to committee reports. Can I ask Ms. Haas if you can review the Education Committee minutes?
Sure.
Thank you.
The Education Committee met on May 12, and we had one of our typical long meetings discussing a number of subjects. We reviewed the financial status of our district in relation to COVID expenses versus their impact on revenues that we're expecting, and we have some information that will be coming up shortly in relation to some grant funding that we're waiting for, but hopefully, everything will be okay for this year. We still don't know whether or not we're going to be getting our state aid payments for the following month. So, those are a couple of big ifs, but hopefully, we've planned accordingly for that. We also discussed, we discussed a graduation update, which, due to the rapid changing of things on a daily and sometime hourly basis, everything we discussed has all been updated since then. But again, I'm also happy that there are committees that are meeting in relation to coming up with the best possible graduation for our seniors. We discussed closeout and reopening plan development, which is very important, that we have a plan for closing. You know, we have things that need to be collected from our students, as well as students who need to collect things that might be in the schools. We will get information out about that as soon as we possibly can. Our summer credit advancement program, we had an update on that. Our program on culinary arts and baking did not meet the enrollment targets, so will not be running, but everything else at the point of last Tuesday was running as long as we could run them in-person. Financial literacy might be able to run virtually if the in-person classes are not permitted, but the math classes will only run if an in-person program is allowed. So, we hope that those decisions are made shortly in relation to whether or not, whether or not that will be possible. Is there any update on that, Kim? Is there any further news on that since last Tuesday?
No, I know we're waiting to hear from the governor as to whether or not we can use the schools during the summer. Kim, we can't hear you.
Yeah.
Sorry. We're waiting to hear from the governor as to whether or not the schools are open for use in the summer.
Okay.
So...
Okay. Thank you. We also looked at projected enrollment numbers and shared the possibility that those numbers can be different from previous years due to a possibility that there might be fewer move-in and move-outs in our town due to the COVID crisis, and at the same time, there might be an influx of registrations after, you know, the dust settles on this. So, we're watching it. So we're watching it. Um, we, um, our administration reviews enrollments two, two times a week, um, to keep an eye on section needs. And typically we have, you know, made the cut on August 1st, um, in order to have enough time to hire the necessary numbers of teachers. So, you know, that is our goal. We'll see what goes on with that. Um, there was also a possibility that we would accept registration of kids without their immunization records, uh, just because of the difficulty that some people might be having getting those records from their doctors. However, students will still not be admitted to school if they don't have immunizations by the start of school. Um, we also had a brief discussion about superintendent goals for our committee. And, uh, that'll be discussed further at a regular board meeting. And we also went over the presentation that Kim just gave to the entire board. So that is our, um, oh, and we also talked about school start times. We had been carrying that item forward because we didn't want to lose track of it while we were involved with all the other things we're involved with right now. And, um, we're going to be talking further with Bridgewater and Princeton about their information gathering experience. And hopefully moving forward on that at our next meeting, which will be on June 9th. So that's it for education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hass. Mr. Gillette, can you do operations, please?
Yes, thank you. Uh, operations met on May 13th. Uh, we had a number of topics. Um, we, uh, we had, um, Ben Green, who was one of the, the directors of the Somerset County YMCA. He came into all, to talk about, uh, YMCA offerings and how they might be able to partner with the schools in the future. Uh, Mike Wasney, our, our detective record was present. Uh, he gave us a, an update on the security vestibules, which will be constructed at each school, not this summer coming up, but in the summer of 2021. Uh, he also updated us on, uh, the current projects and on, um, the future projects, meaning the, um, athletic facilities at the high school. Um, we talked about the, uh, pest control issues at the middle school, which are pretty much under control according to Mr. Mahmood. Uh, we talked about the landscaping and grounds around the high school, which, uh, they've done a good job. Uh, we had some requests to open the tennis courts at the high school and at Amsterdam. I'm happy to report that the tennis courts at Amsterdam are now open for public use. Tennis courts at the high school will remain closed because, uh, they're not, uh, as safe as they could be at this time. In fact, that's one of the reasons why we're going to rebuild them, uh, hopefully this summer. So, uh, uh, so yeah, so we're going to get that done. Chris is making me look up here. I don't know what. Um, but, uh, we, we talked about the food service contract update. I reported, I think, last time that, um, in our contract, um, Sedexo guarantees that we will make enough money, or a certain amount of dollars, uh, to go into our, uh, fund, Fund 20, I guess, for food service. Uh, and if we don't make that guarantee, uh, they're responsible for making up the difference. Those are under normal circumstances, that this isn't a normal circumstance as this year. Um, so it's, it's touch and go right now with about a month left. We are still selling some lunches, um, or not selling lunches. We're providing lunches, but we're getting, uh, refunds from, uh, the, uh, the feds and the state or wherever we get them from for those. So, um, uh, we may, we might make it, but probably not. Uh, we're probably going to let that, we're going to recommend at a future meeting, um, not holding them to that guarantee because there's no way they can make it this year. I think we all understand that. Um, we also talked about, which we talked about annually, um, the minimum amount we need to charge for our standard, um, full lunch. Uh, that's the, um, state reimbursed lunch. We have to charge a minimum for that. We may have to raise it, uh, by, um, 10 cents or something about. We're 16 cents under. There's a minimum you have to raise also. I think it's 10 cents. So I don't know if that, that's not on tonight's, is it? I don't think so. But we'll be doing that. We have to do that sometime, probably before, before September. Uh, Mr. Mahmood reported that, uh, health benefits, open enrollment is going well. That's really an HR thing. You shouldn't, you didn't need to report that, but thank you for reporting that anyway. Um, and let's see, almost done. Uh, we, uh, well, I, uh, we talked a little bit about graduation. Um, some of the same things you heard, uh, tonight from the other, uh, committee report. Um, I, I got off the call at that time, but after that, committee also discussed the superintendent goals and board goals for upcoming year. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Pulserfer, can you, uh, review the HR minutes, please?
Uh, certainly. Uh, we, we began our meeting with a discussion on the earned sick leave law, which we've been discussing for a while. And there's still, uh, a fair amount of questions about what the state's intent is and, and how to administer this. We did have Mr. Lapira join us, uh, to review his, uh, recommendations for updates to the language of the policy. Uh, the policy and regulation are on the agenda tonight for first reading. Um, but I suspect there'll be, still be some more questions about that as we go forward. We discussed, uh, COVID-19 financial impact, as mentioned by some of the other committee peers, um, to review both income, uh, expenses and income, uh, and how these things are impacting us, uh, and how the projections for the rest of the year. We, uh, received personnel updates from Mr. Cowhan. Uh, currently we have, uh, 19 retirements and eight resignations. Um, we are expecting that before the school year is out, those numbers will both go up. Um, and we're also had discussion about, um, how, how we would handle or, and just begin discussions about the issues around, uh, staff being concerned about returning to the workplace in the fall or if we were, you know, when we reopen, uh, and what we would do in those situations. Uh, we also spent a significant amount of time discussing plans for closing out the school year and what it would take to reopen, uh, in September, uh, as, uh, the other committees have discussed. I think there's still a long way to go there, but I think we've had some really good discussions uh, in our committee, and it sounds like the other committees also did. Uh, we, uh, discussed the contract language around coaching and extracurricular contracts. Um, as we saw this year, impacts on jobs that are not full year, full time, um, is kind of weird when we get into this kind of situation. So we wanted to review that and make sure we had, uh, clear language to cover those cases. And we wrapped up by discussing, um, oh, sorry, we did not wrap up. We've discussed, uh, goals with, uh, for the superintendent and for the district, um, for, uh, for review for the rest of the board. And, uh, again, in, in parallel with what the other committees are doing. And that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Pulserfer. So the governance committee, um, met actually prior to all of the other committee meetings on May 11th, um, to preview the COVID-19 financial analysis that was discussed in the other committee meetings. And the only other topic we covered was the superintendent goals and the, uh, district goals for next year. So that is it. Are there any questions on any of the committee reports that any of the chairs could answer? Mr. Gillette?
Okay, I wasn't quite ready, but I'm ready now, I guess. Uh, so on the education committee, um, Judy, you, uh, I, I read the minutes and I think you've reported that you talked about graduation in there. And, let me see if I can find the exact, I'm not going to, probably not going to be able to find the exact. Uh, it says, um, I don't know if we're allowed to read minute of committee report minutes, so I'll paraphrase. So I don't know if that's a public document. But, um, basically, uh, someone asked about graduation plans. This was on the 12th. And, um, yeah, Dr. Antunes, uh, reported back that, um, in the forthcoming couple of weeks, you'll have some decisions. It was that evening that the high school principal sent out an email that decision had been made. I, I don't know if, if Mrs. Hass, if you can reconcile that for the rest of the board?
I can't reconcile it other than the fact that the education committee met from 1:00 in the afternoon till about 4:30. And just like the rest of you, I saw the email at 7:00 or thereabouts. And, um, but I have to say that, you know, things have been changing. Even, even when you have, you know, I think that's a perfect example of how things are being, um, you know, I, I can't even say decided. It's like you can decide something one day and then the next day you get something from the state that it's okay to do X, Y, or Z. Uh, today at, uh, Governor Murphy's press conference, uh, one of the reporters said that, asked whether or not people could hold out hope that graduation ceremonies could take place after July. And the governor said, yeah, you could hold out hope. So, you know, I, I don't go on hope. I mean, we have to be able to figure out what we could do for our students at a regular date that was expected to be graduation date. And I think a lot of people are working the best that they can to get a solution to the problem that respects the seniors and understands that, you know, we want to do something special for the kids, but we are severely limited by the fact that, you know, first of all, the RAC canceled on us, our indoor location. Um, we went to an indoor location in Trenton years ago because people were having difficulty withstanding the heat during an outdoor ceremony. And now they're talking about an outdoor ceremony in July. Well, it's real hot in July. Not to mention the fact that many of our students will be gone and doing whatever it is that they do during the summer. So it's just really difficult to plan under these circumstances. But I hope that over the course of last week after the education committee, I understand there was a very good meeting with a parent, a, a group of parents. And hopefully they're coming up with some very special plans for our kids.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pulserfer, I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Gillette, did you have another, I'm sorry, Mr. Pulserfer, did you have another question, Mr. Gillette?
No, I just want to say thank you. And I'm going to make another remark about graduation, like at the end of the meeting, something totally off this topic, so I don't want to take up any time now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Pulserfer, please.
Uh, I think it's important for the public to understand the, how much, how many discussions are going on about this and how often the, uh, the field changes on us. Uh, just as a point of information, so the public understands the changes. Uh, after all that, earlier in the week, um, our HR committee meeting was interrupted when Dr. Antunes took a cough that changed the rules yet again. So I think it's important for the public to understand, when they're asking questions, the best we can do is answer the question with what we know then. And it's quite likely that on a daily basis, we know something different. Um, and I know, um, it's a struggle for us as board members trying to, to keep track and try and put together, help put together a good plan. Um, and I understand the, especially the parents of the graduates struggling with this. But it really is an ever-changing environment that we're trying to work in. And it's been very hard for us to put together any real plan based on the constant change.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I can echo that as well. It seems like we're getting a little bit of whiplash from, um, from what we hear and then what, what Ken is not permitted. Um, but I think we were all shocked on, on Tuesday night to see that email. Um, and now we're all trying to recover and do the best that we possibly can in moving forward to, um, you know, to make this as special as we can for our seniors. I keep, um, telling, I had a senior graduate from college this year and I tell her that at least she has a story, um, to be able to tell. And I hope she is the only class that has this story. Um, you know, but my kids are very fond of hearing me say that and they respond with, well, nobody wants a story, Mom. And that, you know, that is true, except I can tell you that, you know, 20 years from now, um, while you may not be able to graduate in the, in the usual sense with your, with your classmates, um, hopefully there will be plenty of reunions and everything beyond that time. I barely remember my, my high school reunion. I, you know, and while that's small consolation to, to our, to our seniors that we have a wonderful senior class. Um, you know, they're, you know, hopefully this will help them cherish the opportunities that they have to spend one another from, from here on out in person. Um, okay, anybody else on any of the other, um, committee reports? Okay. Um, then, oh, yes, Ms. Hass?
I have a brief legislative report, if that's okay?
Absolutely, please.
Okay, this past week in the legislature, um, the, um, bill S-3902 was revised into, uh, a new bill. Uh, the old one would have allowed municipalities to delay or prorate payments to school districts. Uh, the update is that, um, the new bill, which, um, still allows municipalities to pay late or prorate the amount of property tax money due to school districts and counties. However, now there's an additional provision not allowing districts to borrow to cover the shortfalls. Um, so, um, it just keeps getting worse. But anyway, it was passed by both houses of the legislature, um, last Thursday. And, uh, you know, municipalities are required to borrow to cover shortfalls, although the timeframe for making districts whole is not clear. Um, a second bill was passed by the Senate and passed by an assembly committee and is awaiting an assembly vote, which would allow kids who mostly were athletes, um, if they go to a community college, they could actually play, come back and play spring sports at their high school. I assume this would be valuable to kids who were working on personal best records or, or whatever motivation they might have to come back and complete their, um, senior, um, senior, uh, spring year. Um, so that's, uh, awaiting an assembly vote. Um, I have no idea what impact that would have on our district or how many people would actually opt for that. And there was another bill, um, which passed out of the Assembly Appropriations Committee last week, but has not been introduced in the Senate, which would authorize the school district to issue, uh, refunding bonds for covering the cost of COVID response and recovery expenditures. Um, additionally, and, and this is what I love about government, on this Friday, May 22nd, the state treasurer, Elizabeth Moye, will be updating, um, us on state revenues, the condition of state revenues. Um, interestingly, it will be August 25th when the governor will give a budget address outlining the budget for October 1st through June 30th. So that would be the earliest time when we will have a hint of whether or not our state aid amounts are going to change. So thinking about August 25th and a couple of days to get back to each district with whether or not there will be any changes, we will probably be starting the school year without knowing what our state aid number is officially. So it's a little concerning. And, um, the fi- the final thing I, I just want to mention, and I don't mean to take your thunder, Lisa, Lisa Maroon, but, um, the Garden State Coalition of Schools has their annual meeting this Wednesday morning. And they have a panel that's, um, usually involves several legislators from the various education committees. And they have John Mooney from New Jersey Spotlight who moderates it. I've been to this meeting for several years. It's a great meeting, very informative if you have the time to attend. So that's the legislative report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. And the next item on our agenda is the, uh, public input on the organization and action agenda. Uh, we very much welcome input from the public during virtual board meetings. There will be one time during board meetings that the public is invited to commit questions or comments. Members of the public may comment about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes or may choose to discuss any topic. Before you submit your question, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our virtual public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. I have one, um, public comment already and hopefully others will come in if, if anybody wants to address the board. Um, I will read that now and leave the public comment open while the board has a discussion as well. And, uh, and then I will close public comment. Um, so this is from Sean Kavanaugh, Kavanaugh of Scott Drive, who, um, is going to get a, a trophy for submitting, um, So this is from Sean Kavanaugh of Scott Drive, who is going to get a trophy for submitting a comment for every one of our virtual meetings so far. Don says, "A few quick things for me. I had a question about an agenda item 8.2, designation of official newspapers. As you know, I write for Hayborough.com, a news site in town. I am asking this question on behalf of myself and not the people who run or own the site. Does the Board of Ed provide additional info or privileges to the Beacon than the other news sites in town such as Hayborough, Patch, and Tap into? In my opinion, as a reader of the Beacon, I don't seem to notice anything different they do as the Board of Ed's official newspaper. The other sites I mentioned write articles of the same stories or maybe at times write articles about HPS more frequently than the Beacon, especially recently. Does the Board of Ed need to have an official newspaper, and is it fair to those other sites that you name one? Also, I know that at a Board of Ed June meeting, retirees are usually recognized. Since that obviously can't be done this year, at the next meeting, will there be something like a slideshow or video played at the Board of Ed meeting and/or put on the district YouTube channel with their pictures, et cetera, so they can still be recognized? And speaking of retirees, I see on the agenda that Woods Road Principal Ms. Howe is retiring. As a former Woods Road student myself, I congratulate her and wish her well in her retirement. Despite the situation we are now in and the challenges it presents in regards to the interview process, do you think you'll still be able to appoint her replacement on time by the start of next school year? The same questions applies to the two other high-level positions in the district that are open, Assistant Superintendent and Interim Assistant Business Administrator/Board Secretary. I do not have another comment from the public at that time, at this time, but perhaps people can address Mr. Kavanaugh's question. So for instance, the board newspaper, Mr. Mahmoud, I'm going to leave a lot of these to you and Mr. Kavanaugh, I mean, and Mr. Callahan, I believe, on the filling the positions.
Yeah, I believe, Dr. Swanson, for the papers, we are required by law to designate one official paper. We are doing that. Two, we are doing the Courier and the Beacon. We appreciate the thoughts, and we'll take that into consideration moving forward. That's all I have as far as the newspaper.
Okay, great. The retirees, I will take that under advisement. I don't know that we've planned out yet what we will do for the retirees, but we'll consider that for the next meeting or the last meeting in June. And then the filling the positions that are available, Mr. Callahan, did you have any comment? I mean, I think we are currently filling positions, and we have several positions that are on the agenda for approval tonight with candidates, so I anticipate that we are moving full steam ahead with that. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and I'd like to thank all the administrators as well as my staff for working diligently, working remotely and making sure we are actively filling positions. The positions that were questioned will be posted as appropriate, and we do not foresee any delay in filling those positions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Callahan. I still do not have any additional input from the public, so I'll open it up for board input or any questions. Mrs. Dads.
I just have a question for Mr. Mahmoud. For the official newspaper, does it have to be print media, like an actual paper?
Yes, it does, Jane, yes. That is part of the requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other board comments, we are going to move our whole agenda as one. Oh, Dr. Harris, please.
Yes, I would just like to thank the public for all their comments lately and remind them, as the head of the Communications Committee, that we do all receive every email that is directed to us as Board of Education. However, ethically, we are not in a position to answer all of those emails individually on our own, and I don't think some of our public understands that because they're making comments like this is falling on deaf ears. We are hearing what you say. We are not the people as board members who answer that. That is either answered by Dr. Antunes or it is answered by one of her administrative staff. We are only there for advisement. Thank you.
Yeah, I can also answer it from the board perspective. I have not answered many of the graduation questions as they were addressed to Ms. Finger or to Dr. Antunes, but obviously the board reads those with intense interest and enables us to really be informed of what the public is thinking. And so I agree that these are not falling on deaf ears at all. Okay, any other comments from the board? There are no other public comments at this time, so I'm going to close public comments.
I have comments from Jane, I think.
Oh, yes, Jane, sorry.
So I guess to kind of follow up on what Dr. Harris had said regarding the public correspondence, I do think that there are, there's some inconsistency in how the emails are responded to. There are some that are responded to quite quickly, and then I feel like others might be, I guess, fallen through the cracks. So, and I don't know how to best remedy that because as Dr. Harris says, as board members were not to respond, and like, I'm just looking at a couple of these that like were responded to and then others that I just don't see any response to. So even just a simple, like, you know, we've received your correspondence, but some of these, like from May 13th, have not been responded to yet. So I just wanted to point that out.
We'll review those and make sure they are responded to. Thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments? There are no additional public comments, so I'm going to close public comment. Any other additional public comments we receive will be listed as correspondence on the next agenda. And as I was saying, we're going to move items eight, nine, 10, and 11 together, but if there's any items that you wish to abstain or say no to, you can just point those out by number. Do I have a motion? Oh, actually, Dr. Antunes, can you please take us through the agenda items?
Yes. So the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education move to approve both the mid-year organization meeting, 8.1 to 8.21, and the regular meeting, 9.1 to 11.3 as follows: designation of signatories, the designation of the official newspapers, the designation of depositories for school funds, the board auditors, the board attorney, the architect of record, the school physicians, treasurer of monies, the insurance broker of record, school warrants, board policies, job descriptions, the school district curricula, field trip destinations, the strong model for evaluations, the NJSIAA and Skylands Conference participation, the affirmative action officer as Mr. Callahan for the district, the Section 504 officer of Ms. Medley for the district, the liaison for homeless students as Mr. Mahmoud for the district, board secretary is Mr. Mahmoud and Mrs. Sangiuliano, and the attendance officer who is Mrs. Corso. The education committee, oh, actually, there are no education items, so we're going to go with the HR committee, the HR agenda, the motion to approve retirements and resignations. And I'd like to point out that we are, Mrs. Burns from Wood Fern, an ASI instructor, has been with us, is retiring after 33 years of service to Hillsboro Attentive Students. And Ms. Howe, who is the principal of Woods Road, is retiring after 12 years of service to Hillsboro, so congratulations and thank you. We've got resignations, motions to approve transfers and change in assignments, motion to approve leaves of absence, motion to approve appointments as listed, motion to approve six-period coverage, and motion to approve policy and regulation for first reading, which is the Earn Sick Leave Law, the first reading only. That's the policy and the regulation. And the motion to approve the monthly bills, the motion to approve the monthly financial statements, and the motion to approve site work and paving contract award resolution as listed. Thank you.
Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Seifer. Thank you, Mrs. Hawes. Dr. Harris, did you have a comment?
Yes, I was just wondering if it's possible to table 8.15 and discuss that at an education committee meeting before we vote on it?
So that is the model for evaluations. This is something that we have to do annually for CUSAC monitoring, and this is the meeting that we typically do that. We can certainly discuss it. I would recommend that we try to move that forward, only because we're in the midst of doing it, and we could, but we could still bring it up in an education committee meeting.
I just have a problem with that model. There are 83 indicators, and there are 180 days of school. That means if a teacher focuses on one indicator every day of the school year, they're only able to focus on 2.4 of those detailed, and they're very detailed. I have researched that model along with the Marzano and the Danielson and the Marshall. So I have five, five different evaluation models that I'm looking at, and I'm just worried that our teachers are not having enough time to teach the children if they're involved in all of this detailed minutia for doing their job.
So this, when the district adopted the model, geez, I don't even recall how many years ago, there was a full committee made up of staff members, all K-12, you know, K-12 staff members, the union leadership was part of it at the time, and administrators. And every group, everybody was broken up into groups and chose the evaluation model to research and then brought all the information back to each of the people on the committee. And overwhelmingly, it was the strong model that was chosen by everybody once all the models were presented. So it wasn't anything that was done in a vacuum. It has evolved over the years, as have the others. And so, I mean, that's, as, offer an explanation as to why that, why that model was chosen, and those who were involved in the choosing of the model. So it did include everybody.
Are the administrators and the supervisors under that same evaluation model or not because it's a teacher?
No, no, they have a model for certificated staff, and they have a model for certificated non-teaching, and a model for administrators, and everybody is under that same model, yes.
It's very intense for 180 days of school teaching. Very intense.
Yes, they're all pretty intense, and we are actually very authentic in our evaluation. We have iterative reliability training every year, also something we have to do annually, and that's part of the administrative in-service. And we also provide training to our staff members annually. So our new staff members get a full day, get three days worth of, full day worth, hmm, I can't remember, it's two or three days worth of training, I think it's three days. And then our veteran staff members get an update on their training annually. So we do spend a lot of time with it, which we would have to do with any of the models.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure that you're looking out for the well-being of our teachers, and I do encourage teachers to do their best always, which this model does, but there are only 53 districts out of 650 in the state of New Jersey who use that. That's only 11% of the schools. The most common model is 291 districts, 60% of the state is using that model. I'm surprised if the state is so interested in having a fair evaluation, every school does not use the same model across the state.
So noted, I mean, that's, yeah, there's so many different models, there's many different models as there are districts, you know, that really could be.
Okay, I see Mrs. Dads, and Mrs. Maroon, and then Mrs. Trheo.
Thanks, Dr. Swanson. One of my, one of my things I want to mention was that, I understand, I'm glad that there was a lot of input from a variety of sources, teachers before it was implemented, but now that it has been in use for several years, it might be a good idea to revisit it now that people have seen it in practice, especially by those who are being evaluated, the teachers themselves. And we have heard from some teachers that, I guess there are some optional portions to the strong model, just how we can explore that, about the idea of looking into that. It does, it does seem to be a very onerous kind of process that the teachers have to go through, and very time-consuming, a lot of it certainly doesn't make them be better for their students.
Mrs. Maron?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, I'm still writing down parts of my question. For the evaluation models, do, is there a timeline? Is, does it get discussed amongst different panels between administrators and teachers for like feedback on, like Jane had said, how long it's been in use? Has there been like a scheduled timeline to go over it? Because like, as I said, things change all the time, and, you know, I just want to make sure, and thinking back on what Dr. Harris had said about the percentage of school districts, if there's other models out there, is that an option, and is there a timeline from teachers and from also administrators?
Well, there's timelines for everything, you know, there's timelines for everything. If we were going to even consider switching a model, we would have to, I think it would be prudent for the district to go through a very similar process that we went through in adopting this first model, and go through a very similar process, which took us quite a while to do that. So, but we're always getting feedback. We garner feedback from our administrators and our staff members all the time. They provide feedback to us, and they do that through the, through the school improvement teams, they do that through the district teams, and so we have open communication with the union if something comes up, we have open communication with each other. So certainly, we have, absolutely, we have that. We also have districts calling us, switching out of other models, calling us about this model and asking us how we do. We have the company, like Mr. Callahan speaks to the company often, as we want to adjust things for our staff members, and they pretty much do do that for us. So yes, we are constantly talking about it. We're always revisiting that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Trheo?
Oh, okay. So I just have, like, I think, three questions, one to Ann, actually. You'd said that 291 districts use a different model, I was just curious what the name of that one was?
The name of that model is the Danielson model?
Danielson, okay. And then my second question was, I think, Ann, you had asked whether administrators are evaluated under the strong model, and I think I heard the answer was no?
No, they are absolutely under the same model.
Okay, yes, okay. And then my third question is actually to the board and to Lorraine, is, because it sounds like, you know, we're going to approve the strong model for tonight because we have to, but is that a, would reevaluating the strong model be something that would be a district goal? Like, would that be appropriate for district goal? I guess that's the question.
In the process of coming up with goals, we could say, you know, holding, I wouldn't say that we would evaluate the strong model, but if that was something that we wanted to look into, we could say that we should review the current model and make recommendations based on that. But I'm thinking that that is reviewed basically as we go through it every year, and that's why they're recommending it tonight for approval. So, I mean, you know, we want to be really careful about the goals that we set because they're important, we don't want to dilute them by having We don't want to dilute them by having too many. But certainly, we can discuss that as one of the, the goals, if that's, you know, that's the role of the board. Any other comments? Okay, well, with that, may I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
I'm voting yes for everything except eight point fifteen.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
And that's no.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver? Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
I vote yes for everything, and like, uh, Dr. Harris, I'm voting no for eight point fifteen.
Thank you. Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Dr. Sossan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
That is the whole agenda, Dr. Sossan.
Okay, so we have, um, informational items. Before I adjourn the meeting, um, I'll open it up to four comments again. Mr. Gillette?
Yes, I wanted to speak for a minute or two about graduation in general, not pertaining necessarily to this year's graduation. Uh, so let me tell you how I feel about graduation, or what my understanding of it is. My understanding of it is the graduation ceremony, the function of it, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of functions, symbolism, uh, in it, celebration of the high school seniors, et cetera. But the function of it is the awarding of the diplomas. Um, and the way I've always understood it is the high school principal presents the candidates for graduation. The superintendent certifies that the candidates have completed the requirements, and the board awards diplomas. And I don't mean, uh, physically handing over the diplomas. Uh, I mean, actually awarding the degree. That's awarded by the board. Um, and because it, you know, in my understanding, it's awarded by the board because it comes from the people who made it possible, the tax-paying residents of Hillsborough, who gave this education to the students. And, and, uh, and the state, let's say. Um, so, so I don't, I, I, I don't think that the board taking a role in the graduation ceremony has anything to do with administering the schools at all. It has nothing to do with administering education. In fact, the awarding of diplomas, which is the function, which is the function of the graduation ceremony, it's a board function. Um, the, the idea that we've outsourced the entire decision-making process about graduation every year to administration, I think is, doesn't have to be. I think we can have a policy, uh, going forward where administration, um, proposes the date, the time, the place, and the particulars of graduation, and we vote on it at a meeting. Uh, it could be a short policy, it could be added to our graduation policy, which right now just talks about requirements. It doesn't talk about the ceremony itself. I think it can be in there. And I don't think it would be overstepping our bounds to do it. And also, I think, in some ways, our graduation ceremony is too high school-centric. Uh, at a, at a nine to twelve school district, yes, it's all about the graduation from high school. But we have students in our district that have been with us not just thirteen years. We probably have twenty percent of our students have been with us fifteen years. We've got, uh, uh, pre-K students, we've got, um, or maybe, let's say, fourteen years. We have a lot of TP students graduating, let's say, this year. They've been with us a long time. Um, I think there can be a role played at the graduation ceremony for principals or assistant principals from the other levels of school. I think that, uh, we don't have an eighth grade graduation ceremony as you would like in a K to eight district. And some districts in a K to twelve even have like a promotion ceremony or something for their eighth graders. We don't do that here. The graduation is not just about high school seniors. It's, it's, it's seniors, but it's about their entire, uh, rewarding their entire achievement at Hillsborough Township Public School District. So I'd like to see a proposal, or I'd like to have a committee, if I get any support at all, work on adding policy language for a policy book that will allow the board, um, to have some input on graduation. I think it could be done, as I said, by having administration, uh, propose the date, time, place, and, you know, particulars. In other words, who's, what the graduation ceremony will look like, and the board votes on it. Whenever we have a vote, we get a discussion comes along with that vote. Um, I, I think it's kind of interesting that we have now a committee, um, of parents and others, um, helping to plan our graduation. I think that's great, except the public already elected a committee to do things like that. And here, the nine of us are right here. They've got an elected committee of themselves. And, but yet, yet some committee has, uh, is going to plan with the high school principal, uh, the same principal that, uh, the same day she sent a letter giving people hope that there might be, still be prom or graduation, that same day she was writing a letter asking the governor to not open school for the rest of the year. And we're having that person, uh, we had a committee with parents planning the graduation when we've got a committee of people right here elected by the public to do such things. I'd like to hear other board members if they think I'm ridiculous in this, or if I have something going on.
Mrs. Maroon?
Um, I'm gonna have to disagree. I, I think that gets into the, the area of almost micromanaging. Um, I, I don't think that's what board members are, are here for, to, 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 to make something like that of, of something that is actually going on. Um, I just feel that, um, like, like who are, who are we? We're not in, in the schools and, and talking to the students. I, I think what is happening right now with the involving of the parents and the students and the administrators, our job is to make sure that that's happening. I don't think it's our job to create that. Um, I guess that's just my, my two cents. I'd, I'd like to trust, trust the people who are hired to, to do that.
Mrs. Stats?
Um, I, uh, okay, I guess I'm gonna waffle here. I agree with both of you. I do think, um, it is up to other people, maybe to, you know, like, have that, a committee or whatever. But I still would like, um, what you said earlier, Mr. Gillette, I would like the board to, uh, be able to approve, uh, whatever is the plan for any graduation. We could have maybe a plan that's in place, and then any kind of adjustments, we would, you know, something in writing that we would vote on, and then any adjustments each year, uh, we would then have to be part of approving those changes.
Mrs. Haas?
Now, I, I'd just like to give the benefit of history, since I've been to every graduation for the entire time I've been on the board. Um, mostly, for all of the graduations, they have been similar or the same. The big changes are two things that we actually voted on. One of them is the calendar, so we do pick the date. When, when we approve the annual calendar, we're picking the date for graduation. And that is done, you know, through the calendar process, starts in the education committee and is approved by the whole board. The other major change in graduation ceremonies over my tenure was moving it from indoors to outdoor, um, from outdoors to indoors. And that was a discussion that the board had a very robust discussion about. Um, so I think for those two items, um, it was, it was very much the board discussed those issues. And in terms of the logistics, I'm not sure you want to put that in the hands of the Board of Ed. Every time I've gone to graduation, I've been amazed at how smoothly it goes with up to six hundred kids graduating, and some number of parents, relatives, friends, et cetera, attending, and all of the staff that attends, and everybody gets their gown and cap, and everybody knows where they have to march, and everybody gets checked out before they, you know, come into the school building that night. And it's been a wonderful ceremony for all of my experience, even from when we're in the, you know, in the football field on brutally hot days with people passing out, which seems to be something that people have forgotten about. Um, so I'm satisfied that any of us as board members, if we had a great idea about graduation or wanted to make a change, we can go through the superintendent and make those recommendations. And we, there's nothing stopping us from having a discussion, just like we're having it now. Um, the really big problem is, right now, we're dealing with daily changes in requirements. Um, we don't have control over our own school building now. Um, you know, and all of this is something that every district is dealing with. Everybody's falling all over themselves because we all want to make this special for our kids. But it's just really hard, and people cannot forget that there is a pandemic going on outside. And the last thing we want to do in, in our effort to, I mean, what kids really want is an opportunity to hug their friends and take pictures with their friends. And that violates the basic social distancing thing that everybody is saying is gonna keep people safe and healthy. So, you know, I understand everybody's frustration about it, but man, this is a very serious thing that's going on. I don't recall anything in my lifetime like this pandemic. And it's scary, and what we don't know could kill us. And Lord knows, we wouldn't want it to kill any of our kids. Um, there is a new pediatric syndrome out there that presents differently from the COVID for adults. It's very frightening. It's multi-symptom, it's multi-organ. It doesn't present the same way, and could have lasting health effects on all of our kids. It's like this major inflammatory disease, which affects every organ in the body. And it's not pretty. And, you know, if I have to err on the side of caution, this is certainly something to be cautious about. And I'm sure that, you know, our people will do the best they can. And again, any input is welcome. I've, I've never had a suggestion that I was told not to have. So feel free to, you know, provide any thoughts you might have. But, you know, we've got twenty days left of school. So, you know, that's, that's a factor at this point, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas, Mrs. Trheo?
Um, so I, I agree with what Greg is saying, but, because I, I want to go kind of back to his point. He wasn't talking about this year's graduation. I think that's kind of out of our hands, as, as everybody has said so far. I think his point is about looking at a policy, and I didn't hear him saying a specific policy. I think he's saying to, um, for us as the Board of Education, I don't know which committee that would be, but I think it's, um, you know, like with our committee bylaws, how we talk about, you know, refer to a committee for evaluation. And I think that's kind of all he's suggesting, and I agree with that. I, I do think that it's something that we should look at as a board because our, our role is to oversee and just make sure that the schools are, are well-run. And I think that that, this suggestion, I second it. Um, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good suggestion to pursue further and to see where that policy might lead. And again, it does not affect this year's graduation in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you, Mrs. Trheo, anybody else? Uh, Mr. Gillette again?
Okay, this is just gonna be very brief. Um, maybe I started with this, so maybe it got lost after my ramble. Um, in my opinion, the awarding of the diplomas is a board function. The diplomas come from the board. Okay, that's something that's, that's wholly, should be wholly within the board's discretion, really. Uh, this is something that comes directly from the board. It's not administering anything to do with the education of the students. Okay, so just to be able to know what graduation's going to be and be able to sign off on it prevents, yeah, maybe it could prevent something like emails going out. You know, if, if, if Dr. Entus had to say to Ms. Binger, "Hey, I've gotta, I've gotta run that by the board first", we could have prevented like emails going out when people, where, where things aren't settled yet. So, so, so I'm, I'm not talking about this year, but in the future, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pulsofer?
I, I, I get the idea of where you're going, Greg. I think that at a very high level, there may be something where we provide some level of guidance. The reality is, there's no way it can work to the extent of, for example, the sending of emails. We meet every two weeks. There is no way that the operational impact, uh, aspects of making graduation happen can wait for us to approve something two weeks later. Um, so, well, I understand the idea of having some more oversight. There's way too much that has to happen here that we cannot hold hostage to our calendar. And we can't take action until it's on our calendar. So if an email needs to go out because something's going on, that can't wait for board action. Uh, and so many of these things, the arrangements of things, and if, if a particular vendor can't provide something and there's a decision to go get to another vendor, or anything like that, none of these things are things that we can hold hostage to our calendar. So while I, I certainly think it would not be a bad idea to have a policy with, um, some direction as to how things ought to proceed, to tie them to the board having, uh, a say on how things get done as things happen on a daily basis, and, and probably from mid-April through graduation, there's stuff happening all the time. We can't hold that process hostage to our board meeting schedule. It'll, it'll never happen. The, the graduation will never happen because we won't take action fast enough.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsofer, Mrs. Stats?
Um, yeah, um, regarding, you know, the, the day-to-day changes or, uh, you know, all the details, I, I just think it'd be good to have us, uh, work on a policy regarding graduation. And that policy, part of that policy could be, uh, it would, uh, be decided by decisions made by, you know, several members of the administration. You know, something like that. You know, the decisions they, they come up with, uh, as a group. Um, and, uh, and have some other parameters. But of course, nothing as, you know, detailed or, you know, as the phrase that was used before, micromanaging. Yeah, so I think we would, uh, stay away from that, but at least have a general policy about, um, the decision-making process on the part of administration regarding graduation.
Anyone else? Okay, so my take on this is, I mean, this is an incredible year, uh, in so many ways. And none of this would be coming up if we weren't in the middle of a pandemic and things were changing so quickly. And, um, I, you know, I agree that the board absolutely confers the degrees, but I don't know that we decide how that control happens. Um, that being said, I mean, I know, there's no problem looking at the policy and seeing, you know, how best we move forward. Um, as Mrs. Haas said, that has always been taken up when we set the, you know, when we set the calendar, and there's sort of a known, uh, you know, lots of discussion that happens when anything has changed in the past. We don't make it a policy to say, "We're going to graduate at Rutgers, we're gonna graduate at the Cure Arena, we're gonna", you know, that's, um... So I mean, I think we can look at the, the graduation policy and see if that can be, um, adjusted. But I don't think that we're ever going to be able to adjust a policy to avoid what happened this last week. Um, you know, and hopefully, we never have to deal with this again. But, um, I, you know, I think Dr. Entus is very aware of the strong feelings amongst all of the board members. I don't know that, I haven't heard from a single board member this week about the situation. Um, I know that I, you know, was on book club on Tuesday night when my phone started going crazy with texts and, and calls from senior parents. Um, and, and, uh, you know, Dr. Entus and I spoke that night, and I've been working, I know she has been working very hard to ensure that everybody's voices are heard in all of this. Um, and it is incredibly unfortunate that we're in this situation, and I feel so badly for the seniors. And, you know, the yo-yo is, is part of the, is part of the negative effect here. I mean, it's, it's, you know, one day you think, maybe we'll be able to do something, the next day, maybe not, and, you know. It is, uh, it's incredibly unfortunate. But all of that being said, we are being heard. Um, hopefully, the administration listens and, and acts what we think is the best we can do for our seniors. Uh, and then we will take a look. And I think the best place to probably do that is either education, because the calendar is set by education, or governance, because it is a cross-cutting, um, issue. Obviously, if, if anything comes out of that, we'll ask the administration to look at what's available with regard to policy and how we can change that, um, or not. Uh, and... to policy and how we can change that, um, or not, uh, and bring that back to the board as appropriate. Anything else before Mrs. Stats?
I'm sorry, I just, uh, I, what I, what, what I'm really confident in is, though, especially as being a, a former teacher of high school students, is, I know this is trite, but I, I'm confident they will make lemonade out of lemons. Because, uh, no matter what happens, it is amazing how they rise to whatever is thrown at them. It is amazing. Uh, uh, I lived through many, several years of where we had bomb threats, and we would be out on the, the football field in bad weather, and, um, sorry to go off on a tangent, but I remember this one student who, boy, we butted heads a lot, but a rainy day out on the field after a bomb threat, um, he, on his own, went and got an umbrella for me. So what I'm saying is that our students are so amazing, and whatever is, whatever is the final decision that's made, whatever format graduation will be, I'm confident that our students will, will, will make the best of it. They, they are amazing, and hopefully, we can support them with an attitude of positivity throughout our, throughout our community.
Very well said. Thank, Mrs. Stats. Um, anybody else? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
That moved. Second?
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose, anybody abstain? Okay. Thank you all. We are adjourned for this evening. Our next meeting will be the second Monday in June.